Well, good morning. I'll call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, November 12th, 2024, here in Palm Desert. And prior to roll call, so why don't we do the Pledge of Allegiance, then we'll do the script. So please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So prior to roll call, I'd like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion of this board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, in that Director Nelson is in Shafter, California, and will be participating by speakerphone. In accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, the teleconference location has been identified on the agenda for this meeting. I'd now like to ask Director Nelson a few questions. Director Nelson, can you hear me well?
I can, John.
Okay. I can hear you too. Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
I was.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
And is it posted at your location?
It is.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public, such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Is there any member there of public there with you?
Surprisingly, there is none.
Oh. Imagine that. All right, well, let us know if anyone shows up. Clerk Ramirez, will you please call the roll?
Yes, good morning. President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada will arrive a few minutes later and will notate that time upon his arrival. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
We do have a quorum. Are there any additions, deletions, or adjustments for today's agenda?
No, sir.
And is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time? Seeing none. Special presentations. We have some good ones today. So there's a list of anniversaries in the agenda. There's several at 20 years, and then we have Omar Zaballos at 35 years. And then we have three retirements at a variety of years. Congratulations to everybody, but we have three, I believe, three, all here in attendance. And I have a nice little script for each of them that I'm going to read. And then we'll come on up, right, and do, what are we going to do? We're going to do speeches?
We have a microphone, so.
We do have a microphone. You'll have a chance to speak if you want to.
So quick, get some thoughts together.
In front of your loved ones. Hmm. Okay, so these are all 20-year anniversaries. First is Ramon Turan. There isn't anything Ramon Turan can't fix or build, which is evident in his day-to-day contributions to projects at CBWD. From pouring cement and painting to welding and building entire structures at the Coachella and Palm Desert offices, Ramon is a jack-of-all-trades. Born and raised in Colexco, he began working at the Colexco International Airport at 16 years old, fueling airplanes for six years. He then moved on to Park House Tire, Inc., where he specialized in installing heavy equipment tires for two years. In 2004, he began working for the district's irrigation division. And two years later, he transitioned into building maintenance, where he has worked for the last 18 years and is considered a lead on the maintenance team. Off the clock, he dedicates time to renovating his 1953 five-acre Fixer Upper ranch in Sky Valley. His family consists of his wife, Fatima, a school psychologist for CB Unified, and sons Brandon, Andrasi, Jason, and Alexi. So congratulations. And I'm going to do the other two, and then we'll come on up. Next, Gerald Zabala. What, oh, good morning. When a local storm hits, who are you going to call? The answer is CBWD's Stormwater Division, specifically Gerald Zabala, Zabalza, sorry, and his fellow crew members. They are responsible for maintaining the district's channels and service roads, keeping them clear of vegetation, and repairing any damage caused by storms. The Coachella Valley native worked various jobs before CBWD, from construction laborer to night loader and product distributor. However, his career truly found its path when he applied for a role on the paving crew at the district. This move was inspired by his father, who started working for CBWD two years prior. He later transitioned to the domestic leak repair team. In 2004, he earned his crane license, which helped him prepare for his role within the Stormwater Division, where he's worked for the past seven years. When off the clock, he enjoys spending time with his wife, Bobby, who owns Zabalza Family Childcare, and daughter's Destiny, Gianna and Savannah. Savannah. And so, congratulations. We're going to do one more. Lorraine Garcia. Over the last two decades, Lorraine Garcia has remained a dedicated, resourceful, and creative force within CBWD. She started at the district just a few days before her birthday as an office assistant at stores in Coachella. She then became a public, became a communications assistant in 2005, which led to Public Information Associate in 2009, communication specialist in 2015, and most recently, Communications Manager and Public Information Officer in 2022. The Coachella Valley native received her bachelor's degree in communication from Cal State San Bernardino. She also participated in the district's Leadership Development Program in 2018 and obtained a certificate in supervision and leadership from UC Riverside in 2019. She's currently working on her credential for accreditation in public relations. A true adventurer, Lorraine enjoys hiking, backpacking, and exploring new places. Her recent travels took her to the scenic landscapes of Ireland and Newfoundland. However, her most memorable experiences remain when she hiked and backpacked through Rainbow Mountain in Peru, a climb that took her 17,060 feet above sea level. So congratulations to all three, and come on up, if you will.
We can add a question. One at a time.
In the order.
Not yet, I'll get it. Off to the side. We need, you just get a moment. Sorry. Congratulations, sir. Thank you very much. So first photos, and then a little karaoke, maybe, or?
You don't have to, but if you want to.
Oh, yeah, go for it.
I'm a man of short words, so I just want to, you know, thank God for giving me the opportunity working for this company, something I love to do. Everything I learned, it's been here, so I'm just glad that a lot of people are happy with the work I do, so thank you.
Very happy, very happy. No, thank you, sir. Stay healthy. Okay, Mr. Zabalza. Okay? Congrats. He's the next one. All right.
It's been a blessing. I appreciate everything you guys have done for me, the opportunities. I've grown a long ways here at the district, and thank you the Lord for all the great opportunities you guys give to me.
Thank you for everything you've done. Last.
Should have had you read it.
All right, over to you.
I can't, yeah, I know. Can't believe it's been 20 years, but I'm proud to be part of an organization that serves my community, the community that I love, and we provide so many critical services, and that I was able to discover my career here and grow it in one organization.
Where are you guys doing? We'll find you out.
Let's make it easier.
Yeah. Again, congratulations to you all. Thank you very much. You didn't want to be in the picture. That's what Peter is. Oh, can you see him? I don't see him, but.
I know.
I see you, Jim.
We're looking at a satellite image. All right. So this brings us to the consent calendar, item 6A through G. And I will request that we pull 6F, as in Frank.
I'd move the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay. I'll second that. And everything's by roll call vote, so we're going to do a roll call vote, and then we'll move on to that item.
Where's my mic? There it is. President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Yes.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you, 5-0.
Okay. So then on the item that's pulled, 6F, I just thought it was worthy of shining a light on this. Budget variances, when they're favorable, are a good thing, but this is a massive budget variance. By my count, if you add the operating and capital variances together, it's about $85 million, which is a really big number. So, you know, there was some explanation for how that happened, but I imagine you can see the concern we have, because our rates are based on the budgeting process. So we look forward one year and even longer to say, you know, what are our needs going to be for rates, and we set the rates based on that. And so, I mean, I know some of this variance was baked into the looking backwards part, but I'm more concerned, you know, so when we set the rates, we knew about some of this, right? But when we set the rates, we're still doing a forward projection and trying to cover our costs of service, really. So, I don't know. I guess I just wanted to shine a light on that, saying favorable is good, but this is way too big, and maybe there's some comments.
Thank you. Thank you, President Powell.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when we looked at the final numbers for Q4, so we went through the numbers, you're right, there is a significant positive variance, which, as you mentioned, is a good thing. I think a large portion of it was CIP, and we talked a little bit about that. That did come in at about $94.6 million for Q4. So as we plan this, we generally look at what those projects would be scheduled. When we look at numbers in April, May of the previous year, to see what may be able to be executed. I know we had an explanation in there, just talking about some of the issues that came up, some of the delays due to pending right-of-way agreements with property owners, unexpected field conditions, so that's some of what we do. There is a reforecast that we do in the spring on that, which gets that a little bit more into alignment, which is where you can see that budget ended up at about $121 million. On the operating side of it, I think the major revenue difference is property tax revenue came in significantly higher this year, particularly with the state water project. And as we know, those revenues are very restricted, so that fund does have a significant reserve at this point. We know that's set aside for large water purchases and differences in hydrology and things like that, too, so that is a large portion of the revenue difference. But also on the, just on the general property taxes as well, we've been able to do a little bit better on that. And then investment earnings this year as well, so some of those are highlighted in the report. But definitely understand that when we do look at this, what we're trying to do is budget, you know, full employment when we put that together, so there are some savings generally on the salaries and benefits side of it. With supplies and services this year, we actually mostly expended that budget. A lot of it was due to some of the emergency repairs that needed to happen due to Tropical Storm Hillary, so we are reflective of that. And then what we will be doing with this is looking at where we end the year this year, and then, as we're putting together the forecast, put those into those assumptions that we have as well going forward. But I think some of the larger variances, as we just kind of talked about that, I know energy costs were a little bit higher this year as well than we expected, especially on the IID side of it. So these are factors as we look at that. We try and continue to adjust and make sure that we do it the best we can, but.
So on the state water project tax, that's something that is restricted. Is there a large enough reserve there that we should consider, or at least take a look at, reducing that tax rate? I mean, if the property taxes are up this high, they're not going to go down, you know, most likely, so.
Sure.
They're going to continue to go up, but you've already gone up to a higher level, which you're going to build from there, right?
All right.
So can we see a presentation at some point on whether or not we can lower that tax?
Certainly, and that is actually what we'll be planning, starting in January, with the study sessions that we have, as we start looking at rates and what we need to develop in the future. I believe the board's guidance, as we went through the budget process this past year, is to revisit the tax rate, and as we do each year, we elected to go ahead and keep that at the 11-cent rate again this year. We also know that there's a lot of unknowns with future projects coming up at this point, particularly with sites, with the Delta Conveyance Projects and things, too. So as those costs materialize a little bit better, those reserves will help us to not necessarily have to make a rate change currently, but what we do look at, at least at this point, on what we're forecasting out for the next five years, as far as operating expenses, is it looks like we will need to take a look at that property tax or that levy rate this year for fiscal year '26 to see what we need to do. So that levy is currently for this fiscal year, though, at 11 cents. That was what was approved this year.
We also have anticipated expenses with Orville and with Paris.
Right.
So not necessarily as big as sites and the Delta Conveyance Project, but there are costs out there that are still hanging, so.
All right, well, we'll look forward to that. And the water sales were only through June, right?
Yeah, and water sales, you know, that was.
We had a very hot summer.
There. Yeah, and we'll take a look.
You're going to see a little difference, I think, in the next quarter.
Yeah, and we'll keep monitoring consumption. We know this year, we did show lower consumption, again, on the domestic side of it as well, so we'll be modeling that forward a little bit, too, as we come forward with our rate proposal and what we need to do for the budget this year as well, but those are some of the factors we're looking into as well.
I have a question, too. Can property taxes be used to reduce water rates?
So we do use the property taxes in a general basis for each of those funds, so I believe the domestic fund, we allocate a little over $2 million for that, and so it is to the board's discretion on how we do the majority of those taxes. Yep.
But not the state water project?
State Water Project Tax, yeah, that needs to.
General Property Tax.
Yeah, so that's a separate levy, but the general property tax, the 1% that we receive, we do actually spread that out. I know the board went with the recommendation to put some of that towards sanitation a few years ago, so we do adjust that, so we'll come forward with some recommendations on what that could look like as far as rates and what type of offset.
Yeah, and I should clarify that the state water project tax does have the effect of lowering the domestic rate, because it helps keep the rack rate lower, which the domestic rate pays. So there is an effect there, but you don't apply it directly to the rate.
And there is some savings because of those rack expenses for domestic this year, since consumption is a little bit lower, that's part of your positive variance as well.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I have one last question. On the charges for services, that one was pretty high also. What drives that? Does that just?
I could look into specific funds. I'm trying to see what we noted on this. We had domestic meter installations and customer installations came in a little bit higher than budget this year. I'm trying to remember what the specific would be, but a lot of the charges for services are those types of things that, as development happens and things like that, we basically see those values fluctuate a little bit.
So what, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what, not the specifics of it, but I'm trying to get a sense of what the pool of things are in there. And so you're saying, so is it driven by development? Is it development-driven, or what was the difference between last year and then this year? What was?
Sure. So it's a little bit of a large bucket. There are a lot of different charges that go into that. Charges for services even are how we actually charge our enterprise funds for internal services and things, too. So some of the rates that go to motor pool, some of the expenses as well, all end up in charges of services. Trying to see if there's a specific one on that, and we need to get back to you.
4.8 million in insurance claim funds?
That actually is a piece of it, yeah.
And then the domestic water installation and customer installations came in higher.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I'll move approval of 6F.
Second.
A roll call, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Pass.
Thanks, David.
Thank you. Now we have an ordinance. There's no script for this, huh? Yeah, okay. So 8A is Adopt Ordinance 1440.1, Regarding Recycled Water Rules and Regs and Cross-Connection Control Policy. Aye. Morning, Olivia.
I'm Olivia Bennett, Municipal Water Program Manager, here today to request adoption of our recycled water ordinance 1440.1, which will supersede our existing recycled water ordinance. Our existing recycled water ordinance was approved in December of 2020 as a result of coverage under the statewide recycled water general permit. We applied for coverage under that permit as an administrator on behalf of our customers, and we needed a vehicle to implement and enforce the regulations and prohibitions of the statewide permit, and the ordinance was the means to do that. And so now we have two main reasons why we need to update our recycled water ordinance. The first being the state adopted a Cross-Connection Control Policy Handbook, which replaced California Code of Regulations Title 17 for public health related to drinking water supplies and protection of the drinking water supplies for backflow protection and cross-connection prevention. And the second is for the administration and enforcement of dual-plumbed sites. So firstly, the state adopted the California, or sorry, the Cross-Connection Control Policy Handbook, which replaced the sections of Title 17 that were related to backflow and cross-connection prevention. And that was, the handbook was adopted in December of 2023, and it was in effect July 1st of 2024. So we have encompassed what they have changed there, and I will go into it if you'd like, but you're going to hear a lot about it, because domestic operations will be updating the domestic water ordinance and intend to bring a study session to you on that for their plan, because they have to submit a plan in July of 2025. So of course, the Cross-Connection Control Policy Handbook is going to have a significant effect on our domestic water ordinance, but as far as it pertains to this recycled water ordinance, we have to update our definitions of terms and replace any reference to Title 17 with the Cross-Connection Control Policy Handbook. And there's a couple of sections outside of the definitions where we had to update based on some contents of the handbook. And then the second reason for the update of this recycled water ordinance is to address the dual-plum systems that will be irrigating their front and backyards with recycled water. If you remember, we adopted or approved the recycled water agreement for the customer that is desiring to use a dual-plum system. And in that agreement, there were about 19 obligations or requirements for them to uphold in order to do so, so we have included those now in our recycled water ordinance, so that we can update, or I'm sorry, enforce and address any violations they might have. So I'm here today to request that the board adopt the updated recycled water ordinance to supersede the original ordinance from 2020. And this updated ordinance would include a new chapter, 3.35, which would supersede our existing chapter 3.35. And I think a strikeout version and a clean version was included for that chapter in the packet.
Are any existing customers that are using recycled water going to be affected by this and have to change due to any difference?
The biggest impact is just definitions. There were minor changes throughout the rest of it. The biggest impact will be for Cutino.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I'm assuming this is for, but there won't be anybody else, I mean, the cities who are using recycled water won't have to do anything different?
No.
Okay.
No, there's no additional.
No additional.
Mostly changes for CBWD with that policy handbook.
Okay.
But those are required even if we weren't doing the new product, the new development?
Right.
Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
My mic, okay. President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Yes.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Pass by vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. 9A. Who's presenting this? Jeff, are you presenting this?
Yes.
All right, go take, your floor's yours.
So for this item, it is to consider the general manager's employment agreement payment of incentive compensation for 2024. If the board wishes to consider this approval, then under Government Code 54953(c)(3), prior to taking action, the following oral report needs to be made. One, that the Second Amendment to the amended and restated Employment Agreement provides the general manager will be eligible for a discretionary bonus between 0% and 10% of the base salary. Item two, the performance goals for 2024 are attached to the Second Amendment. Number three, during a performance evaluation of the general manager, the board determines that the general manager met 9.5% of the maximum 10% available regarding those performance goals. And four, based on that, a 9.5% of the base salary equals the amount of $35,908. Any incentive compensation that is approved will be paid in 2024. So if the board wishes, they can approve the payment of this bonus based on meeting the performance goals of 2024.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve 9A?
Make a motion and approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and do you want to say, Jim, well done?
Sure, sir, I could say that. But I think I really want to pass on my appreciation to staff. They really make this job a lot less difficult than it might otherwise be, and so I very much appreciate the support that they provide.
Yes, yes. They make you look good, is what you're saying.
That's a tough, that's a tough thing to do, sir, as you know.
Yeah, well, they do. So we have a motion, a second. Any other comments or discussion before we vote? Roll call vote, please.
Just make sure, okay. President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Yes.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Pass 5-0.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. 9B, PSA for.
Morning, David.
Triennial. David Wilson, hey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Purpose of this item is to authorize the general manager to execute a triennial professional services agreement with Northwest Hydraulic Consultants to perform review services and development review services and stormwater flooding analyses throughout the valley. As you may know, the Coachella Valley, obviously, a lot of development requires a look at the regional flooding, and we have an on-call consultant that we utilize for development projects that allows them to look at the very technical analyses that are required to look at how you're going to convey flows and comply with Riverside County Ordinance 458 and our ordinance 1234.2 in California Drainage Law. And so the cost of this request is, these are projects that are funded through developers. We do on occasion use Northwest Hydraulics or the on-call consultant for various CBWD projects, which we would bring before the board, before we ever induced any expenditures. We had a staff of four members take a look at the requests for proposals, which we sent out in September 11th. We opened those requests for proposals on the 10th of October, and there's a score packet, or rather, a matrix here with the scores by each of the staff. We reviewed all of them, and NHC came out on top, and with that, I'll take any questions.
David, do you know how long NHC has been our H&amp;H consultant?
That's a good question.
That's, I do not. I was thinking that on the way over this morning. I do, I started here in 2011. I think it was around 2010, 2009. They've been here for at least 15 years, as far as I know, but I can get you that number.
Yeah, I've been here since two thousand and ten. They're the only ones, I think, we've had. It's since my arrival. I can't speak before that.
But you've enjoyed working with them, I think, right?
Yes, NHC is a highly technical organization. They're, they're detached from the valley, which provides a little bit of a disassociation, if you will, with respect to development and that sort of thing. So it provides some less of an incentive for any other, you know, not gamesmanship or whatever that could possibly play a role in any reviews.
Sure.
Okay, fair enough.
John, I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion, second. Roll call, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada. Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thanks, David. Sorry to ambush you there.
I'm guessing they probably know how long. But they're not here, I guess, so. C. This is the floor's yours.
Good morning. Good morning. For the record, my name is Sabrina Neese, Engineering Manager for Domestic Water. The item before you today is a request to award a construction contract for the reservoir seventy-one oh one dash two project. There are a few deviations related to that. The low and apparent bidder, lowest responsive and apparent bidder was beast construction. However, we are requesting that we waive the immaterial deviations related to non collusion affidavit. Effectively, just a few dates or one date in particular, there was a typo related to that. We did consult with legal counsel. There's, they're still bonded to that non collusion affidavit, so it doesn't change the context of that. The project will, the request is for three million, three hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for construction. Additional expenditures in the amount of one million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars for a total request of five million, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. The project is funded by USDA grant and loan. However, we currently only have three million, three hundred and ten thousand. That's approved by USDA. We did submit a request to extend that funding for an additional one million, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. That's currently under USDA's review. So our proposal is the interim to fund that using the water system backup facility charge. And I can answer any additional questions or present further.
The, the estimate, the engineer's bid?
It was four million, five hundred thousand. And so our low, the bid span actually was three point three to five point one million.
Yeah, I saw that. That's a pretty wide
Yeah.
spectrum of options, so. Okay, good job. Thank you.
And these are grants?
It's a grant and a loan. So we currently have two million, one hundred and forty-four thousand in a loan, one million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand in a grant.
Okay.
Does this have a DBE requirement or just good faith effort?
Just a good faith effort.
And then, and these folks are using some DBE folks?
Well, they only are required to show that they follow the steps, but there's no formal DBE requirement for this particular contract.
Okay.
By USDA requirements.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I'll make a motion and approve.
I'll second. Nelson.
Gotcha. Code of the vote.
President Powell.
President Powell. Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Yes.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, pass five oh.
Thanks, Sabrina.
Next is D. Which is the authorize the request to withdraw this bid.
Morning, Armando.
Good morning, President Powell.
Morning.
Members of board, audience. For the record, my name is Armando Riz, Engineering Manager for Sanitation and Electrical. The purpose of this board action is to seek authorization from the board to, one, accept GA Technical's request to withdraw its bid. Second, authorize the general manager to reject all bids. And third, to approve new solicitation of bids for the project, following some clarifications we can do in the specs to, to make that bid package a little better. The purpose of the project is to replace an aged switchboard that is about thirty years old that serviced the operation building and service station. The project addresses critical upgrades to the switchboard and generator, ensuring reliability and continuing tedium power supply. The switchboard, as it stands now, at thirty years old, it's obsolete. It's hard to get parts. And so there's really a push here to get this project going. There is some concerns with the bids as received. I think we did a good pro, a good job in regards to project advertising. We did have very good turnout in our pre-bid meeting, walking the contractors through the project, explaining the project. And we did receive a total of four bids ranging from about half a million dollars to one point one million dollars. But unfortunately, at the very last minute or past the eleventh minute, GA Technical Services requested to withdraw its bid. Typically, this is allowed within the five days of a bid opening. I think it came in about the twenty-third day, which is highly unusual. There is a, there's, they're saying that there's a clerical mistake. They're about seventy-five thousand dollars short on the demo. But then it goes further. The second bidder, second bidder, parallel bidder, did not receive, did not submit a bid bond. And so it was deemed unresponsive at time of submission, which leads us to the third bidder, Eco Energy Solutions, with a bid amount of eight hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight. But unfortunately, when we did a review of the bid, there was discrepancies here. So that leaves us on the fourth or fifth rung. And I think at this juncture, staff is really recommending that we do a sub GA Technical Services withdraw his bid, that we do have the general manager reject all bids and allows the opportunity to rebid this project with a little bit of modifications to their specs regards to how do we best describe the demolition so that there's not a discrepancy, a wide range of bids. So with that, I'll conclude and see if there's any questions associated.
Yeah, so, so the same firms that bid the first time will have an opportunity to bid, but now they've seen everybody's bid.
That's why we have to modify.
Yeah, there, there's a Yeah, we're going to do a better job in regards to making sure that we describe the project better. Hopefully, that description will help us pencil the bids and yes, everybody has a bid exposure here, but hopefully, we can still get better bids than, than these that seem to be a little messy.
Yeah, yeah, definitely not an optimum outcome here. Okay. What was the, what was the amount of the bid for, from GA?
Five hundred.
Five seventy-five. There you go. Yeah.
It was five hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah, I got you. Okay. Well, imagine there's not much we can do now.
No.
Well, I guess you could accept the fourth rung one, but that's prob, that doesn't make sense.
Hey, Armando, this is Peter. You, you mentioned that GA Technical Services thought they had a clerical error of seventy-five thousand dollars in their bid. Why don't we just add the seventy-five thousand to the five twelve and accept the bid?
That, that is we, we thought about that in regards to, but I think it would probably be better for the better, for the community as a whole to be able to rebid this project out and, and not reopen that, that bid solely just for this one contractor. And Jeff, maybe you would have.
Right, and then also, the other bidders would say that GA, with the name of it, came in purposely low just to get the low bid and then said later, oh, well, we need another seventy-five thousand. And so the other bidders would say that that gave them a disadvantage over the other bidders by coming in low just to get the low amount and then add, trying to add on the seventy-five thousand. I get what, what you're saying and that may not have, and that may still keep us under an amount that is manageable, but from a competitive bidding process, the other bidders would have a claim then that the process wasn't followed.
Yeah, at, at least in the federal system, which I'm much more familiar with, you have different acquisition strategies that you can go forward with. One is an invitation for bid, another is request for proposals. A request for proposals typically allows you to negotiate with those folks that have submitted. An IFB, an invitation for bid, does not allow negotiations. And that's why asking them to come back in and just restore the seventy-five thousand would be not consistent with the way it's supposed to be handled from a process standpoint. And that, and that's, Jeff's basically, I'm assuming the state is similar. And that's where the other bidders could come in with a protest vote, which could tie us up for.
Well, the frustration I have here is that they, we're going to allow them to get off the hook on the bid when they're substantially lower than the others. And if all things considered, GNA can do the work for five twelve. And then we do a in-construction amendment to the contract for that, whatever. I mean, we do that all the time. There are change orders and we're, we're increasing we're increasing, you know, small amounts as contingency fees and so forth. And, and my concern is that they're all going to come in at eight hundred thousand on the next bid and we're going to be out three hundred thousand. It just, it's, it's frustrating to allow GNA off the hook on this if, you know, they're, if we think that they can do the work for that amount.
Was the clerical error on a bid item or is what was?
Yeah, they, they're, they're saying that there was a clerical error on the demolition that left seventy-five thousand.
On the demo?
On the demo, and it should have been a lot more than, than that.
Though those are all very, very good points and, and that's what is frustrating about going with the, you know, a bid process that is pretty strict. There are different criteria for allowing a change order later. And you wouldn't, in theory, allow a change order for something that the contractor should have spotted at the beginning. So I get it. It's, it's a bad outcome, but under strict competitive bidding and the exposure from the other bidders, that's where we are.
There's no way to remove the demo? Bid out the demo, get someone to do the demo. It ju, it wouldn't work for the project?
I, I think it, we, at that point, it would be precarious because then we'll raise more additional.
Or just changing the project.
Right, to suit a, a certain need.
Once again, that makes practical sense, but from a competitive bidding procedures point of view, unfortunately, that would change the project and then have other claims.
We don't, you don't have the ability to remove a bid item? We don't have the discretion to say, you know, we don't want to do this bid item?
I, I think once we award the project after, yes, but at this juncture, I don't think we have that.
I mean, plus the, you already have the, the re, on the record that they made a mistake. And so if you remove that item, it would, it wouldn't look, that wouldn't look right either.
But didn't you say they came in twenty-six days after?
Yeah.
Yeah, typically.
Come in within five?
A bidder allows you, as a contractor, you're allowed to withdraw a bid if there's a discrepancy in your bid. You have five days.
But that, now, so now the bids are open, everyone sees them, and they have five days to back out, right? And they didn't do that.
I say you don't allow them to back out.
And so now we can allow them to back out and there's always a recourse that we can go after their bid bond so that we can make some course in regards to this additional funding that we might see.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think either they, we hold them to it or we keep, keep the bid bond because it'll go, the bids are going to come in higher.
There's no, no doubt.
And I bet you they probably say, we'll do it.
I mean, what happens to their rights after the five days? What, they're, it's, so there's a point in time where their, their right to cancel goes away. But we're going to allow them to extend that out beyond that date. That doesn't sound right either. Why, why, is that standard to be able to do that?
It's a, it's an internal process to have a five-day deadline and going down that five-day deadline would, was, is, is within the, the discretion. That's why it's before the board to decide whether or not you want to waive that five-day deadline, allow it to be longer than that and to let them out of the bid.
Right, I think, excuse me, the difference between the five-day and the twenty-three day here in this situation is that the contract says they can withdraw their bid within five days. If it's beyond that five days, then the district has the right to pursue their bid bond. So in this instance, their bid bond is ten percent of the construction contract. So we're looking at fifty thousand dollars. If you think that's worth it.
Yeah, I, I think it is worth it because then it, it sends a message to everyone else who's bidding that this is not.
Yeah, I mean, other, otherwise, they're all going to, they already know the number, so they're all going to come back at eight hundred. So then that's going to cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars, right?
Jeff, if we do this, what is our exposure? What, what remedies do the other contractors have?
So if the board takes action not to accept the withdrawal, then we would say, we are going to hold you to this contract. And then at that point, they can either do the work or they can say, we can't do the work for that price. And we can pull, we, we can call their bid bond and collect on the bid bond. I'm not saying that they would be that clean. They may argue that, well, that the specs weren't clear or whatever the case may be. So there is some exposure of some legal challenge from this contractor, but we have the options that have just been explained to you about holding them to it. And if they refuse to do it, calling the bid bond, but there's no guarantee they're not going to come back with some other, with some claim. Anyone can sue. I get that. But there is some exposure to some legal challenge from the contractor, but we have our rights, it have just been explained.
So the bid bond is only for fifty thousand dollars?
Yes, it's ten percent of the bid.
That's.
So they, so the, so the bond bonding agency would pay fifty thousand dollars? And then we go out and rebid it anyways, or how, how does?
Right.
That's not going to happen.
So it doesn't.
That company doesn't want to do that. Nobody wants it to happen. And then the rates to go, go up. I mean, this happens all the time. And, and then they come back to us midway through the project and ask for some more money. And we either tell them yes or no.
Right, I mean, that's the other situation here. We're going, we would be going into this contract, forcing a contractor to do a project they don't want to do. And that's kind of the ro, wrong foot to be starting off a project on because every little item they're going to change order us for.
Essentially, they know they left at least three hundred thousand on the table.
Right.
Yeah, and they say it's, yeah, we don't care about the fifty thousand.
But these are, these are all big companies, right? These are all big companies. They have to be or they couldn't be bidding. I mean, we've gone through this before.
Yeah, I put, I think it does put egg on their face to have their, their bid bond called.
Oh.
I don't know that, I don't know that they would want that. I, I do feel that, you know, it feels bad that they left three hundred thousand.
And it, just to be clear, just calling a bid bond, bid bond companies, sureties are not always just more of a cooperative just to write you a check. So there may be some pushback there that we need to pursue. I'm not saying don't do it. That's why we have them. But I'm just saying it's not as clear cut as that.
Let's approach this a little bit differently. How long do you think it would take to get us back out on the street with a revised modification to solicit additional bids for the new scope?
Just a couple of weeks or so, and then we could bid in December, through the month of December and be ready to come back in January, the first meeting in January.
So January, February.
But Jim, that's not the point. We, we know, we know it's going to happen. The bids are going to all come in at three to four hundred thousand dollars more, every single one. So.
So here's another question. Do we really need to do this project? I remember this came up.
Yeah, we really do. It's been in the, it's been in the budget for, for a few years and we really, we really do need to do it. The majority of the project is just procuring the switchgear. What, what seems to be the discrepancy between the bids is this demolition item. And so we need to tighten that up so that we don't have this big disparity where somebody, the low bid puts fifteen thousand for demo and somebody else puts, you know, two hundred or three hundred for demo. So that's what we need to tighten up and, and make that a lot clearer. But the switchgear is the switchgear. I mean, that's, that's a, that's going to be a standard price. They're going to be getting it from. They're gonna be getting it from one or two or three manufacturers, and so that's a quote.
What is that, like fifty percent of the project?
Uh, no, I would.
Thirty percent.
Pretty high, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I I get the arguments, uh I I don't think we really wanna go forward with forcing somebody to do work that. I sure wouldn't want that.
No.
Yeah, but, okay, so let's say, yeah, that's a good point, you don't wanna force them, they're gonna thank you for change orders every step of the way to try to make up their three hundred thousand.
Well, they'll be cutting corners pretty where they can.
Uh yeah, or they'll be cutting corners, so then with that being said. What happens to them moving forward in terms of like? Any sort of, is there any consequence to to this?
Well, they would not be able to uh provide us a bid uh for the second uh iteration of this process.
Really, why is that?
Well, well, so the process is the 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 district takes the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So if this any bidder who gets rejected, or in this case, is allowed out of the bid, comes back and bids again. If they are the lowest responsive bidder, then the staff and the board has the opportunity to determine that they're not responsible. But that determination needs to be made at that time, we 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 couldn't prejudge them to say you cannot bid on the project. But to the point that the board's trying to make here is, are they, is anybody who gets out because of a clerical error past deadline responsible for that project again? That's a determination this board can make at that time, if in fact this GA is once again the lowest bid.
We can't set an internal policy where we try to set some rules to prevent folks that just want us to reject their bid because of a clerical error that we feel. They just feel like they're losing three hundred thousand and they just wanna come in higher next, we we can't set a policy that kinda tries to tighten that up.
So two things you could do, one is a pre-qualification process, where you pre-qualify bidders based on their financial viability and expertise to do the job, and they're not allowed, anyone would not be allowed to bid if they didn't meet our pre-qualification criteria. That's where you would be able to flag this, or if this parti- if any particular bidder comes and we have the uh ability to, or the criteria, and can substantiate that they're not responsible. Those are the two criteria that you can use, pre-qual or determine they're not responsible.
I mean, thi- this doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me, I mean, in real business, it doesn't make sense to me. I mean, in my business, when I make a bid to somebody and the market changes, and 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 I can't just go to them and say, I can't do it. Or it costs me more money, I I I have to deliver, and if I don't deliver, then there's consequences for that. And so, you know, and the consequences are, you don't get the business ever again. And so, we we can't force that on anybody, we can't say that because of this. So the only other way to do this is to force it on them. And if they wanna, if they wanna screw up their their bonds, then they s- then they, you know, and and raise their rates, I don't think they're going to. And I said, it's gonna be on CBWD to make sure that they do a good job. You know, and then if they don't do a good job, right, then they'll have a black score on being able to come in and bid on anything ever again, right? Isn't that how it works?
But I don't know that we can negotiate that and say, you have to do this job, or we're gonna go after your bid bond, so I'm kinda looking at.
Well, no, no, right, so we would say you're going to do this project at the bid amount that you bid.
Correct.
And they'll say, okay, we'll do it, and then the issues will come up that Carrie's talking about. Or they can say, we can't do it, we're not gonna do it, okay, we're gonna call your bid bond, and then we work with board, make a claim to the surety. Try to collect on the bid bond, and then we go forward to rebid it.
Correct.
And I get your point about in the private sector, but I mean, it's it's the point where in a public sector setting, even if a contractor sues a public agency, that doesn't disqualify them from bidding on another project in the future. So, uh I'm I'm not alleviating your concern or your observation about the private sector, I get it.
Black mark on a company, a company doesn't wanna do this over what they say is seventy-five thousand dollars, right? That's what they're saying, all they're short is seventy-five.
Well, that's what they're telling us now.
That's correct, that's what they're saying, they're, we're just short seventy-five, so.
We have a formal letter in writing from them requesting to or saying they wanna.
We can't do that though legally, I mean, we can't just say, alright, at seventy-five, we'll go forward.
No.
That's not an option.
That's correct, I'm not saying that's an option.
And because we didn't set this up as an alternate bid where the demo is an alternate and the providing the switchgear, we can't say we're selecting just the switchgear or just the equipment.
I get it.
And we're not awarding the demo, because the bids weren't set up that way, it's part of the base bid.
So so what's the consequence to us if they do a lousy job? I mean, you you already said these, a lot of its parts, these are standard parts that they're essentially gonna demo what's there and then install these these new things that are standardized, so those, we're not worried about the equipment that they would be supplying. Well, we're just worried about what, timing and things that they're gonna, they're not, they're not gonna be easy to work with? I mean, how how s- how critical is this switchboard project to to our, you know, daily operations? I mean, what what if they?
Well.
It is super critical, uh the switchboard is the hub of where the commercial power comes in and has the distribution to all the sub panels within operations building and the fuel station. And so, any cutting a corner, so to speak, or any subpar work, could be dangerous. Uh no- not unless of non-functioning, it's just dangerous. So i- it is very su- super critical that we get the right contractor.
But you guys, you guys don't allow any of the right contractors to bid upfront. I mean, you don't just let anybody off the street bid, they have to have qualifications.
These guys were the right contractor, we already awarded the bid to them, right? I mean, we made the determination that they were the right ones.
Don't allow any of the right contractors to bid.
Sound a little like Charlie's Angels there.
I would just speak into the, to the super cr- uh criticality of the project, it's, it is the commercial, commercial power comes to this hub. And is distributed to the building, it is very essential.
And they're taking the existing one, they're not put, building one next to it and then cutting over at some point.
Right.
And it's a public bid, so anybody can bid, they meet the qualifications, obviously, you have to set some standard for some qualifications.
Right, if um if the specifications, if they're saying, hey, the specifications weren't clear enough, otherwise, we would have bid it higher. That could, that could be a change order, couldn't it? And we we didn't have to be tied up to the argument that, oh, we're just giving you seventy-five thousand dollars more.
But that typically happens after you've awarded and you've, you know, something comes up in the field. But going into it knowing you're gonna issue a change order for seventy-five thousand, that's um, that's basically just giving them letting them put in a bid for seventy-five thousand more than what they what they submitted.
Yeah, it, change order is supposed to be for a change condition discovered later.
Somebody made a mistake in the bid process, and it is. I mean, that's just life.
They have chosen to withdraw, and so.
But they, but they didn't withdraw within the timeframe, and so under the law, we have the right, that's why you guys are coming to us, right?
Right.
I mean, we have the right to say, no, we 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 reject that, because they were not within the five days. So we're not doing anything that, I mean, that's why you're bringing it to us, or you guys would have just done it yourself.
Well, we we um, we we can't make that decision ourselves, that's a board decision.
Could have, if they would have come within the five days.
No, we would have also had to bring that to you, because they would have, they would have um asked to withdraw within the five days. And then we would be in the same situation, except for the fact that we wouldn't necessarily have a strong case to go after their bid bond. The only difference is we have that opportunity now, because it's beyond the five days. But we still would have had to come to you and say, hey, they requested to withdraw their bid, it was within the five days of the contract. There's all these other issues with the other bids, so we're going to come up, we would come to the same conclusion, to reject bids. And um ask for um, ask to rebid the project.
Uh I think, you know, it's also important to keep in mind that while they're claiming only a seventy-five thousand dollar clerical error. There is a big disparity between them and the next two bidders.
Correct.
And it could be that there there's really more that they have missed. They may not have been able to tie in their equipment purchase prices, they may have problems with subcontractor submittals. You don't know that.
But that's not our problem, is it? Because we'll hold their feet to the fire, I mean, you guys, we we accepted this bid, right?
No, we have not accepted it, we have not accepted it.
There's really two ways to look at that, Jim, yeah, they they, you might think that they, you know, left something off the bid. Or with the price of all the other bids, you could say, well, they're just trying to, you know, get more money out of the district in when they put their bids in, so, I mean, there's two ways to look at that. And and I think that the board, this discussion is reflecting that there's two ways to look at that. In one way, you know, they could be uh, I I'm not saying they're being exorbitant in the bids, but they could have, you know, high bid the the projects, and this other company bid, GNA, bid the project correctly, except for the seventy-five thousand, so uh I mean, I mean, I'm, I tend to look at it as uh, hey, if they messed up with their uh administrative duties and adding the seventy-five thousand in, they're gonna have to make a decision on whether, you know, and it's a good bid, they're gonna have to make a decision, do we eat the seventy-five thousand? Or do we eat the fifty-one thousand as ten percent of the bid price? Or do we do the job, they have three, they have three decisions.
Yeah, and if the second low bidder was closer to five hundred thousand, and the third low bidder was closer to five hundred or six hundred thousand, I I'd buy into that argument, but to me, there is just too much, you've got a spread here between the second and third that is not as great as between the first and second. So in my mind, while they said seventy-five thousand because they missed the demo, I'm sure it is more than that, and we're not gonna get the project for five hundred and twelve thousand. Uh plus seventy-five thousand, if you even wanted to give them that, I, this is not a good place to be. But I think uh I I agree with staff's recommendation, we need to go back out on the street and try again.
Carrie, what um, just for more information here. What did they write down as other similar projects? I mean, I think they they probably, did they, do they provide, is that part of the bid package? Do they provide a list of similar projects and so, so these guys have, they've done this type of stuff in a lot of different places, I imagine.
Yeah, they 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 did provide us a a reference check. Where we talked to different agencies and school districts in regards to work they have done similar to this. The results uh were uh mixed, you know, uh some were good projects. And others, you know, there was uh concerns where it's just very, being he- very heavy uh with late schedules and change orders, so like all contractors, it was, it was a mixed results. There was, but to your point, yes, uh there was other projects with the same complexity as this.
And how many references did we check?
Uh we checked a good, about nine references.
I mean, it was, it was enough of a positive that staff recommended that we accept their bid. So they weren't, they didn't have a checkered pass that caused concern, cause you did recommend them, right?
We didn't make any recommendation.
But the committee did, well, we, we had bids.
So again, it's a difference between a request for proposal and an IFB. Request for proposal, you can have an evaluation that ranks based on.
So this was just purely on price?
Yes.
Yes.
But they were qualified, be, somebody decided that they were.
Right, they met, they met all the, you know, as Mary Beth likes to say, the four corners of the spec, I mean, they filled out their paperwork correctly. Um, you know.
Yeah, if they were not responsible, then the recommendation today would be to reject it because they're not responsible, and that provides an opportu- opportunity to respond, et cetera.
Yeah, I don't know that I agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, so I think, I think what uh, what we're trying to get at here is that uh that the recommendation to reject the bid wasn't initiated by staff, it was initiated by the bidder saying, I'd like to withdraw my bid, right?
Correct, yeah.
So I think that's what we're trying to get at, is that, if it weren't for them saying it. You would have been here recommending that we awarded.
Right.
Right.
Which leads us to believe that they're more than capable of of executing the project. Cause they've done similar work.
On their website right now, I mean, they're, they they, I mean, it's government agencies, state government, LA Unified School District, Orange County Unified School District Restaurants, when this is not a small company.
Right, which which kind of can, right, concerns us that twenty-three days later, they're withdrawing their bid. I mean, um they should, they should know the specs, they should know the process, and we're entering into a contract with somebody.
Carrie, they they redid their bid because somebody screwed up the bid, but that's what happens.
Where 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 are they?
Go indoor.
Okay, so what about, you know, I mean, there's so many things that could be happening here, it's hard to really get a sense of what's going on in their head. But, you know, sometimes contractors, you know, maybe they got another job closer to home for a bigger amount, and then they're saying, well, this is a little tiny project. You know, we don't wanna get stuck with that, and, I mean, it could be so many different things, right?
It could, you know, he- here's my concern, I I get the the fight argument. Hold them to it, et cetera, and legally, we might be able to do that. My concern is that we follow one error, which is their error, with another error. And forcing them to do this job when they're not gonna have the the desire or I mean, getting the money on the bid bond isn't really what we want, right? I mean, that's, that's not, we want to get the job done right. And so, I I I would be in favor of, even though I wanna fight, you know, sock it to them or whatever, but I don't know that that really gets where we need to get, which is a good project, and.
John, um, if I can just say, I agree with um all of your comments, and I think to get us to a point where we have a decision on this one way or another, I'm going to move approval of of the item nine D accepting staffs.
Yeah.
Uh re- re- recommendation.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I'll I'll second that. Even though we like to fight.
I I think this is one where um the fight might not be that big, and it's a a good one to.
I agree.
To uh, eh, you know, we're not talking about a a ten million dollar project here, I think, you know, we've never, since I've been here, I don't think we've, we've really, we've always spent several times that we've said, okay, you can withdraw your bid, and I think we've been in the same position.
I I have, I have a feeling this company is just gonna, we do a fine job, I mean, that they don't want to have a stain on their record. They don't want you to go out and tell your colleagues what a bad job they did, I mean, and tell the industry. I mean, they're they're, this is, it's it's still close.
It's close.
I mean, you guys are in a close knit, you guys talk with your other colleagues from other industries, and if the word gets out that they, you know, did a bad job on this and didn't hold to their bid, then.
Doesn't work like that.
That that's, I'm just, I don't mean to be doom and gloom, but contractors don't usually take responsibility. In general, they'll say it was the specs or the district or the agency or the, or the circumstances or everything else, I get your point. And we'll make that point, if that's what you wanna do, but I'm just saying, it's not gonna be that clear, there's gonna be another side of the argument that they'll make as well.
Well, then then I, as a director, will will learn something.
Yeah.
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 Me too.
No, you you get, I see both sides, but I I just, you know, litigation is not a great outcome either.
I don't think this is gonna go to litigation.
I'll see. Alright, so I think we've had enough discussion, I do appreciate staff comments. Uh anything else, Peter, before we vote?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Alright, well, why don't we go ahead and do the roll call?
Yes, uh President Powell?
No. No, as in?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. It's a double negative, yeah, yes, sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that.
We motioned to do approve, yeah, so I'm in favor, yeah, yes.
Vice President Estrada?
No.
Director Bianco?
No.
Director Aguilar?
Yes. Yes.
Director Nelson?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna go see what happens, huh?
Well.
So now, staff's recommendation was not accepted.
Right.
So the board probably should provide direction on what you want us to do.
Well, it, so they have a bid, we've not accepted, we've said, no, you cannot reject your bid.
Right.
So, um. Uh, there's.
So if they don't do the project, then we call the bid on.
So you need to approve.
Right.
The project.
At that bid.
With that bidder at that bid price.
But that's not on today's agenda.
Well, so you can. You can do that, I think, because that's the opposite of what this is, or the staff can go back to the contractor and say, look. Your bid was not rejected, we're gonna hold you to that bid. And uh, then come back and then if that's the case and they say, great, we're gonna go with it. And we can come back and have the board approve it. I think from a legal point of view. I think you could decide to award the contract cuz this project is before you today. So you could, uh, it's before you today and you could have rejected the bids, but if that doesn't get rejected. Then you're gonna hold the lowest bidder to that bid, so I do believe you have the authority to approve. Awarding the contract to GA Technical Services at that bid price. Cuz if you just go back to them now, they'll say, well, you didn't, okay, you didn't reject it, but we're not sure we're gonna do it. You've decided you're gonna hold them to it, but to hold them to it, you have to approve the contract, so I do believe that you can approve the contract.
Okay, we, yeah, I think we should do that.
Alright, well, you'll need to make a motion.
So the motion would be to not accept the request for withdrawal bids and award the contract to GA Technical Services.
Well, we already, we already rejected the the uh, recommendation from the staff.
Right, okay, I'm sorry, so.
Yeah, so I would, I would make the motion that we accept the GA Technical Services contract. Um, and move forward with the project.
At the price submitted.
At the price submitted.
Five hundred and twelve.
That's correct.
And I second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh, then a roll call, please.
President Powell?
Alright, this time I'm a no.
Okay.
I think that's the right way to go.
Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Bianco?
Yes.
Director Aguilar?
No.
Director Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, passes three, two.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be learning something too, I'll see what happens. Well, it'll make the lawyers happy.
Thanks, Carrie, thanks, I'm on no.
Thank you, guys. Alright, so, uh. Onto E.
Hey, Carla.
Alright, prepayment.
Good morning. Just wanna make sure that Darren um Hodge is online from PFM Sylvia, if you can unmute his mic. Darren Hodge and then also, um, I think Doug Brown from Stradling as well. And of course, uh, David Lacy is in the audience as well, who can help answer any questions, um.
Darren, Douglas and Chris.
Yes, please, thank you. So we've talked a little bit about this SRF loan and some of the headaches it's been giving us during our budget study sessions and a couple of other um times. Sprinkled throughout on the last six months. So we are here before you to formally request that we um potentially pay off the loan. The state has not given us um a formal letter yet, uh, but we have been working with them since August. We let them know. Um, I believe it was in the, um, sorry, August twenty-second. Uh, with our intent to move forward to pay off the loan, we asked them to please not pledge the loan. Uh, for other state funded debt, and they have agreed to do so until we make our decision. We did let them know at that time that we intended to pay it off before the end of this calendar year, maybe the beginning of December. Um, we thought that was sufficient time for them to give us a final resolution and written um consensus to pay off the loan. Unfortunately, as of today, we have not received that formal consensus from the state. Um, but they have given us um an email stating that they are working through the approval process internally. And so the way we calculated the repayment um was based on the debt service that is due um in January of twenty twenty-five. So that gives us about a month of interest um cushion, uh, should we need it, um, depending on what the state uh provides. The reason we are asking to potentially pay off this SRF loan is because we are anticipating to issue some domestic debt in the next two fiscal years. The amounts are noted on the screen there, twenty-four point eight million and twenty-five, twenty-six, and then uh potentially. Upwards of about five hundred and ten million for chromium six and twenty-six, twenty-seven. Of course, that's a preliminary number. But the best estimate that we have at this time. And depending on those borrowings, um, both the rate covenant and the additional bonds test, which. Are reflective of the debt service coverage um ratios and then also additional um conditions when you issue debt. Um, uh, can be very tedious with this SRF loan in place. So this is language directly from the SRF loan, uh, verbatim, it's also included within the staff report. Basically, the annual, um, the maximum annual debt service would need to encompass all debt. Regardless of how that debt is structured, and the next uh slide would further illustrate that. So, I guess I can jump and I can come back. So, on this slide here, what you're seeing, um, on the. The lines, the green line and the brown line, the net revenue requirement is the green line. With the SRF loan, so we would need to raise that additional revenue to issue the debt that we're anticipating to issue. Whereas the brown line would be without the SRF loan. So if the debt was structured, those are the bar charts up and down, it wouldn't matter how the debt was structured. The money would need to be raised upfront because it's the maximum annual debt service when the debt is issued, no matter how the debt is structured. So that's, that's our biggest issue we have, and so I can go back.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I agree, okay.
They, um, the other item to note here is that those revenues would be excluding any transfers from the rate stabilization fund. That is clearly noted within the SRF loan. And so we wouldn't be able to use one-time revenue within our reserves to cover that requirement for the re- revenues. And, um, the outstanding, any future debt would also not, would be. Would be subordinate debt, sorry, to the SRF loan, which would also not make it as attractive when issuing future debt.
Right.
Um, see if I can, oops. This is, I'm sorry, this is a little sensitive, um. This is a total assigned reserves as a six thirty twenty twenty-four, which would be forty-three point three million. The unassigned balance is thirty-three point four million, which gives us a total reserve balance within the domestic fund. Of seventy-six point almost eight million, uh, minus the potential SRF loan repayment of the seventeen point five. Which would leave us on still fully assigned reserves of forty-three point three million and unassigned of fifteen point nine. And the total would be fifty-nine point two. The one thing I do want to make a note here is that we will be needing to pay off the twenty twenty-two domestic notes as well. By June first of twenty twenty-five, and that's another thirty-five million dollars. So that's where we would um dip below the assigned reserve target level at that point in time. But we haven't determined fully, we have options to pay that, we do have the line of credit for twenty-five million. Um, with Bank of the West or BMO Bank now, um, and so there are some funding or different opportunities there to structure that repayment. Uh, with the potential of the twenty twenty, twenty-two million dollars in the USDA funding. Um, to be repaid to the district. And we're not sure exactly when we're working with engineering as far as when those projects would be completed, so. Maybe eight to eighteen months after the twenty twenty-two domestic notes are paid off. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and of course, Darren and and team on the line are also.
Yeah, so this is the prepayment we've talked about several times in study sessions. Which it 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 sounds very convincing to do, but with this presentation today. Has anything significant changed in the thinking on this? Compared to what we were talking about, you know, six months ago or whatever that was?
No, and this is an opportunity we have now, we may not have it in the future, if the state pledges, um, this. Debt service towards their debt, we may not have this option to pay off this loan in the future.
You mean, you won't have the option to prepay?
To pay it, yes, in full.
Yes.
We could still continue to do the debt services scheduled, but not to prepay it, and we would be tied to the covenants within the SRF loan. When issuing the future debt.
Yeah, we we consider this in our, in our study sessions for the, for the rates, right?
Couple times, yeah.
Times, so. It was, it was something we were planning for.
Right. But but we also have that thirty-five million dollars that's due.
June first of twenty twenty-five.
First, yeah. Which is gonna tighten. But but you can replace that with the the line of credit and have less restrictive covenants, that's the main point here, yeah.
Yes.
Alright, I'll mo- I'll move um approval of nine, of a nine E.
And I'll second, but just, just have one more question, the the Highway eighty-six project, um. Which one is that? From what point? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I can't tell you.
Our questions for engineering.
Highway eighty-six project, phase two.
The one picking it up from where we left it off?
No, no, this was the one that we did, um, that went to county line, from Avenue seventy-four to to county line. And we consolidated with, um, ID eleven.
This project or that's?
Yes.
Doing another project that's picking up from there down to Salt City?
Yeah, that's phase three and four, that's, we have a planning grant for that, the five hundred thousand dollar planning grant.
But is FY twenty-five, twenty-six for twenty-five million?
Is, that, that was for this, um, phase two.
For the project we just finished?
Yeah, for the project we finished a few years, like five years ago.
Okay.
This is, the, we, we, we received a loan for that Highway eighty-six, phase two, that's what we're talking about paying off. And that was for the section from Avenue seventy-four to Avenue eighty-six. And there was a pump station involved as well, the booster pump station.
Yeah, I I get that, and maybe I'm confused, that's why I wanted some clarification, I I, um.
We are working on a phase three and four, which would pick it up and would replace the existing line. That goes from Avenue eighty-six to our reservoir in Salt City, but that's just under, it's just under planning right now.
Okay, let me just try to make sure I understand here, is, um. The loan we're trying to pay off is the project we just finished.
We finished.
Where they gave us like a five, five million forgiveness.
Right, exactly.
Okay. And then, but this here says, uh, the district anticipates issuing bonds for the dom- for the domestic fund, and then there's this. Twenty-four point eight million.
Right.
So we were, so if.
So that's for other projects.
So that was my question, what was, so what's that?
That's for Sun, Sun City, Tullivera, the booster station, um, fifty-five thirteen. And the reservoir fifty-five fourteen.
Okay, that's, alright, I I was just trying to make sure I knew what that was for, and I was confused, I thought it was for the next phase of the highway.
Oh, okay.
So that's where my confusion was at, thank you, makes sense now.
Thank you. Alright, anything else before we vote? Um, roll call, please.
President Powell?
Yes.
Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Bianco?
Yes.
Director Aguilar?
Yes.
And Director Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Got that one out of the way. Been talking about that for a while, so, uh, F. I'm not gonna try to summarize this. Very wordy. Go ahead, Carl.
Thank you again, I forgot the next two items. Um, the next two are very similar in nature, different projects. Um, the first one you have here. Oops, sorry, there you go. Um, these, so now finance is involved in ensuring that permits are issued. Uh, for projects, and so we are kind of, um, the first people that get involved. Um, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife is requiring these projects to have either a letter of credit. Which has an annual um cost to it, or an escrow agreement where we have to uh send monies and they're tied up during the construction phase. And then in addition to that, they're also requiring, uh, requiring an endowment fund in perpetuity to manage for the mitigation of these projects. Um, and you see there on the screen a summary of the requirements that are within the agreements to issue the permits for these different projects. Uh, engineering is here and they can answer any questions regarding the projects themselves, and environmental services can answer any questions regarding. They're, they're the ones primarily involved with CDFW and issuing the permits and negotiating these agreements. Finance is here to facilitate the um financial obligations in order to get those permits issued. The reason that we are requesting the option to do either one of these, if you recall, we. Uh, issued a CDs with BMO Bank, they're the ones that did the letters of credit. Uh, for the Bureau of Indian Affairs and, um, the, the other three that we have. Um, but then we also did do an escrow agreement for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars with US Bank. And we've reached out to, I've reached out to both banks, and basically, the last time we did, an escrow agreement took six months. To get that agreement in place, that's a very long time to wait for permits to be issued and projects to continue on. And so we'd like the flexibility to be able to negotiate with both banks, US Bank and BMO Bank, to see which one of the two banks could give us. Um, the, the requirement quicker. Um, there is a letter of credit template within the agreement, so we've sent that to both banks. Um, and so we're asking for the flexibility to do either one of those options, but the costs are on the screen there. The um, letter of credit would have an annual estimated cost, and then the escrow agreement, again, would have to, we'd. Physically send the entire amount, it would earn interest, that interest would be used to. Uh, pay some of the legal requirements and oversight of the escrow agreement with a small portion returning to CBWD. At the end, after CDFW uh releases the projects um in full. And those endowment funds are required at about eighteen months, according to the agreements, after the project construction begins. And I believe these are anticipating to begin in January of twenty twenty-five. And I can, the other screens are the other, sorry, um. Two slides are just pictures of the projects themselves. We're happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this request.
Do we have the funding?
Do we have funding already in place for these projects? Yes, I believe they are included within the capital improvement project funds, yes.
So were these costs have baked into the?
No, they were not included and they were not known, these are negotiated costs, they're not, um. When you read the agreements, they're not set in stone, clearly identified, it's something that staff negotiates with, um, the different permitting agencies. And they would be coming back to the district. So, um, even from an accounting perspective, I'm not sure if we would capitalize these costs with the actual, um, project.
There's no known calculation or handbook on how these amounts are arrived at, as far as I know?
Yeah, so we basically follow the guidelines in these agreements to come up with the the letter of credit and endowment fund. But they are included in in the.
But I mean, how the state decides.
With, there isn't a guideline.
Is the endowment fund, this is a new thing?
No, um, no, it's always been there, the endowment fund is for, for uh, ongoing maintenance of these conserve land.
But we don't have an endowment fund currently, cuz you're correct.
Well, we need to do this, so, we need to do this, so I'm gonna move approval.
Yeah. Seems so inefficient. It's no, it's just a waste, it's a waste of money. It is, I'll second your motion, Director Aguilera. Yeah. No. I guess they're worried about people walking away, they set up these mitigation projects and then they walk away. Okay, so motion and second, any other discussion? Um, roll call vote, please.
Yes, President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
So before consideration of item G, it is the same type of instruments. That are requested for approval, um, however, this one has been separated out because it's a different area. And in this, or uh, actual facility phase, it's different. For Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Facility Phase Two. Uh because this pro- this project and and facility may in the future. Uh include an easement to be conveyed of from a business entity for which Director Bianco has a financial interest. We would recommend that he recuse himself from item G. His financial interest and that easement is not part of what we're considering today, but this is the project. For which it relates. So to be clear that there's no involvement in this particular project, we would. Uh recommend that uh Director Bianco uh not participate in this item and leave the dice.
And I know you said it's in a different area, but it's really close to the other one. It's across the street, right?
But that's where the easement interest is, yeah.
Okay. So we'll go ahead, Carl.
Um same same requirements, same agency, CDFW. Um again, happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this particular item.
I have a question.
Second.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's kind of unrelated to the question at hand, but when are we gonna start that this project, this phase two? Construction.
This one says the construction will begin in early twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, that's him.
As long as we can get the mitigation projects done.
Yeah.
Right. And again, that's why we're asking to negotiate with two banks because um BMO Bank was able to issue the other. Uh letters of credit within forty-five days, um which would allow us to still stay on that schedule.
Okay. Good, we have a motion and a second. Do we? Yeah, we do. And uh. We'll go to the roll call vote.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Yes.
Uh Director Bianco's recused, Director Aguilar.
Yes.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you. Four oh.
Okay, pass. Four oh, good luck with the negotiations. Okay. So this brings us to uh. Written communications, there was one listed in the packet. Board general comments, Director Nelson.
Yeah, so uh we had an election uh last week and uh.
You did?
I am grateful uh and thankful for all of the folks who voted and uh I was reelected in that, so uh. I'll be around the district for another four years, um uh good or bad. But I uh you know, just super super grateful for. This opportunity to, you know, be a part of this board. I think this board has a a lot going for it. Um you know, we rarely have uh three two votes, but we had one today and I uh I do think that that, you know, shows that. It's a very thoughtful board and um works well together and. And has a common desire to do what's best for the public, so appreciate the opportunity. Um and um you know, the other the other thing that happened in the election, the. Prop four was approved, so we'll see those Sultan C uh funds uh get. Moved out to the species conservation habitat uh through that program, uh so that was good news as well. So that's that's all of my comments this morning and oh and last comment is um you know, please do, you know, be a part of uh. Uh Jim, your career here at the uh district and uh you know, another contract years past and doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, yeah, we'll keep you around for another four years.
Thanks.
Sir, was that for Director Nelson or for me, sir? I just want to clarify.
Oh yeah, you know, it's it's purposefully big. Uh Director Aguilar.
No, I would just say um uh you know, I want to wish a hearty congratulations to my colleagues for the reelection and. I look forward to working with them for the next few years.
Uh Director Bianco.
So I also too are, you guys are stuck with me for another four years. I ran again unopposed and am very grateful and and honored to be here. You know, I I it's it's hard to believe that. That uh it's been eight years already. I'm gonna do another four, but um I'm very proud to be with uh the presence of great staff. We have we have a great. Team here at CBWD and 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 honored to be a part of it and and I'll pledge to continue to do my best to uh make you. Guys proud on this side too. So thank you and congratulations, Peter. You know, he 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 had to earn this one.
You too. Congratulations and thanks.
Good, good. Uh Vice President Estrada.
Congratulate Director Nelson on another four years and congratulate Director Bianco another four years. I've enjoyed working with both of them. And congratulations to your general manager. I've also enjoyed working with him a lot.
Very good. You know, I put in um. Some of you might have seen my response to an email on our legislative priorities. But uh now with the the change in administration and kind of just going back to what we we saw a little bit of during. The last um Trump administration. I think that. There should be a coalition of folks that are um pushing Endangered Species Act reform. In a manner that would help California manage its water resources. And I don't know who who if anyone else is talking about this, but you know, there there's a chance, I think, to do that. And hopefully result in a reform that would allow water to move through those pumps a little more. Beneficially for the people of California. So anyways, I sent that comment. I'm not an expert on this stuff, but it just seems logical to me, you know, and and somebody's got to be pushing this. I don't know if Aqua or anybody is. Is on it yet, but but it seems like a reasonable priority for. CBWD. So anyways, I threw that out there. Are there any board requests for future agenda items? Hearing none. Onto the meetings. Direct uh October second, Director Estrada.
Yeah, that was a while ago, but um. They wanted to have a talk about Prop Four, which uh as you heard, passed. So during that interview, we we highlighted what those. Revenues would mean for the valley and you heard there was money for the Sultan Sea. There's money for um drinking water and I think specifically for here. Might be some money for chromium six, so that's what we talked about.
Thank you. Uh same day, uh Director Aguilar, Aqua.
Yeah, John, thank you. This was so long ago. Um it was uh as I recall, mostly a discussion around litigation exposure. Um and what agencies can do to um combat that.
It could. October seventh, North Lake Pilot, uh Director Estrada.
That was a meeting between uh staff here, CBWD. Uh the county of Riverside and Sultan Sea Authority and the state. The to talk about uh some updates on the North Lake Pilot Administration Project and it was uh. Almost a a pre-meeting to to the next meeting that's coming up here on October ninth. So I'll just go ahead and report on that also. And so um. The. The state and 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 the county, I think we're just trying to make sure that everybody was on 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 board before they. They had this bigger conversation with a a bigger group of stakeholders. Uh which happened on October ninth and and for the most part, we went over. The the same information related to. The the water volume that is expected out there and how it's. Driving the size of the project, so the project is now. Being significantly reduced from, I believe at one point was a hundred and forty-seven acres to now maybe about fifty acres. Uh Jim, do you remember? I. Forget the the exact number, but it's uh it's been reduced due to the amount of water that's available and also just some some budget constraints. But uh it's still aimed at achieving all the things that the original project was hoping to check off. That was that that was that meeting.
Thank you. October fifteenth, Director Nelson.
Uh yeah, let's see that. Yeah, so we had um uh. Both the California Natural Resources Agency and USBR up to the Sultan Sea. Uh as you know, IID completed their conservation uh programs. Uh to uh save up to two hundred and fifty thousand acre feet of uh water. Uh annually uh up to twenty twenty-six and with that uh the USBR's has committed. Two hundred and fifty million dollars and so that was uh part of that. Uh and this was uh not not for the groundbreaking of the project, but for groundbreaking of additional acres that would be. Uh developed through that program. So uh number of agencies were there, Jim was there. Uh and then we had a tour of the project for those of us who wanted to see and they've made a lot of progress. They moved, I think. Five million cubic yards of dirt out there. Lot of dirt.
Good. Uh you have the next one also this.
Yeah, on October seventeenth, you know, we were um trying to work through some bylaw changes uh. To ensure that districts like ours had uh uh solid voting rights uh with the. Um with additional um members that are donating to uh California Farm Water Coalition contributing. And so we're trying to ensure that those voting rights uh are not diminished by others that are. Uh participating, but uh not at the same level that uh districts like ours is.
Thank you.
And then the next one, October twenty-three, uh the Ag Leadership Program's been around for, I think. Close to fifty years now and that's where Ag uh leaders across the state uh are chosen and participate uh. In a two to three year program uh and and get acquainted with uh how government works. Well, in this instance, the Ag Leadership Program is inviting about twenty uh Washington DC uh. Workers from across USDA, from NOAA, from uh a number of agencies, the pesticide uh regulation uh folks and. Uh bringing uh mid-level to high-level managers out to understand uh what districts. Like ours uh do and how we uh respond in uh supplying water to uh our uh district area. So I was fortunate enough to be a speaker for that and like to thank uh Lorraine for kind of setting up her staff to to help out with that. Uh we then went and visited the canal and then some farms uh across the uh valley, so it was a good program.
Yeah. Next is the State of the City, uh Director Bianco.
Director Estrada was also there. Um the um State of the City was done in the park on what Sixth Street, I believe. I'm not sure what the the name of, but it they. Veterans Park, they did a really good job. Um the mayor got up and and talked to uh. There's a lot of people there about uh the goals that have happened over the last couple of years and and the direction this city's gonna go, so. They did a a really good job. I was glad I was there.
Yeah, nothing to add, but I was there. Um. Thank you.
Sure. Go Coachella. October twenty-fifth, uh Director Nelson, your your ethics.
Yeah, so as a as a requirement by the FPPC, I'm required to do a two-hour ethics training for which I did on October twenty-fifth. Uh to meet the uh state requirement.
Alright, yeah, go ahead.
Then the twenty-eight, uh I we had I attended the Farm Water Coalition Meeting. Uh we passed all the bylaw changes that we've been working on, so. Grateful that that's done uh and really uh have a uh some good reports about our social media campaigns, Cultivate California. Uh things are are going well. Uh there's going to be another uh social media influencer tour in February down in our valley, so um. Uh some of you might get reached out uh for that and um yeah, it's a good meeting.
Next, you got the next one?
Oh, the next one? Um oh, the Irrigated Lands Coalition Meeting, uh quite a bit of talk um. Uh this um coalition, um you know, trying to. Um include all of the growers for this state requirement to report nitrogen use and uh best management practices. Across the valley. It really is integrated into the uh Coachella Valley uh salt and nutrient management plan. And so there's a obviously a lot of discussion about CBWD's uh collaboration in that regard and. As a board member, I I you know, like to thank the district for being um very involved in uh you know. Sampling and testing on water quality and so forth. Uh the district's been good with that, so um. Appreciate that and trying to find, you know, other opportunities to collaborate as well. I think, John, you were on that.
Yeah, yeah, I was on that one also, so I can be added in there, but. Yeah, you know, it's 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 striking to me how. Our costs are so much higher than what they're incurring at PVID, so. That's kind of where my focus is, is how do we do it the way they're doing it?
Yeah, and the way they're doing it is the district is uh handling um fair amount of of the the work. Um as a uh you know, as a response to, you know, their their requirements for salt and nutrient management plan, so um. Yeah, it's a very different model over there and uh uh the growers are still paying for it, but it's a lot less expensive.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to adopt that model.
I mean, they're like at two bucks an acre and we're at eight.
We have to get the district involved.
Big difference. I'm thinking getting PVID involved, often as here. We're too expensive. Yeah.
Think they want to do that?
Yeah, I do. Alright, so um. October thirty-first, you had a a meeting on the Avenue Fifty Bridge in Coachella?
Yeah, there uh both Director Bianco and I were were there. It was um. The primary topic of discussion was the Avenue Fifty Bridge project. It's a city project. It's crossing over the um whitewater storm channel. And uh there was a conversation about some of uh CBWD's uh requirements on that project that uh. The city staff wanted to talk about and so those were discussed. There was a. A resolution or at least some um. Next steps that I think uh everybody was in agreement with, so turned out to be a pretty good meeting. Uh and then there was a small update on on uh chromium six and the work that CBWD's doing with the with the pilot testing. Uh and that was that was about it.
We were really urging the city to keep the road open. Until they get the bridge done, because the bridge is not gonna go over the old wash. It's gonna be a lot farther away. So they could keep that open and their plan was to close that down and make all of us go to Avenue fifty-two. Which that would affect CBWD. Because since that's only a two-lane bridge right there, um that would be very difficult, so hopefully they change their mind and keep that open for some time instead of closing it down for years.
Yeah, this was for the um. Was your ask for it to be?
Opened until the other ones.
Until the other ones built. That was really the ask was, okay. Alright, that was it.
Thank you. And then we had November eighth, uh Agua Caliente Mediation Principles.
I was not able to attend.
Meeting, yeah, and I was there and uh. We are gonna meet again on the eighteenth, so. We're, the football is. Moving towards the goal line. Won't say where where we are in the field, but we're moving in that direction. Any other meetings? No, is there a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported on?
Make a motion, motion or approve?
I'll second.
A roll call, please.
Can, can I ask, sorry, Jeff and I were going back and forth, I, I missed something on the October twenty-third, Coachella State of the City. Um, did Director Estrada also attend on behalf of CBWD? I just want to clarify. As CBWD, okay.
You weren't speaking, huh?
Okay.
Just mayor?
Just mayor, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I.
Okay, uh Vice President Estrada? Director Bianco. Director Aguilar. And Director Nelson. Thank you.
Pass five oh, general manager report.
Yes, sir, again, my thanks to the board and the staff, it's, I've been here almost fifteen years now, uh, general manager for almost thirteen. Um, but uh on the schedule, on the calendar, uh, I think it happens infrequently, but we have Aqua and. Crua meeting at uh basically the same time, the first week in December. Uh, I think most of the board members will be going to the Crua meeting, I will be attending Aqua meeting, which will be here. Uh, so it's a little convenient. If you're not going to Crua, you're welcome to attend the Aqua meeting. I'll report back, I, there typically is policy issues that get discussed, but there's really not much action that takes place in those meetings. That's all I've got, sir. No COVID uh cases that I'm aware of.
Fifteen years and we're still referring to you as the new guy, is that right?
Well, there's always more to learn, sir, so I'll take that defense wherever I can get it.
Council comments?
Yes, Mr. President, just wanted to brief. Sorry, I just wanted to mention two Brown Act bills that were signed by the governor do not take effect until the first of the year, of course. One has to do with, there is a closed session currently for a discussion of any threat to public facilities. And it includes utility facilities, but, and the legal interpretation is that includes a closed session to go over cybersecurity issues. Because cybersecurity can impact those facilities. AB two seven one five makes it clear now in the law that there is indeed a closed session for critical infrastructure. Threats to critical infrastructure, including issues that, you know, are in regard to. Uh, uh, controls, cybersecurity and technical and threatened interference with cybersecurity and. Uh, issues in regard to electrical communications. The other one is AB twenty-three oh two, and this has to do with clarifying the just cause. And emergency exceptions for remote meetings, as you know, there is the standard traditional close uh. Remote meetings, including the one that we had today, but there are also exceptions where there is not a need for. Public access and the usual noticing procedures for just cause, two per year and for any emergency. There was some confusion in the law in regard to the size of the agency and the percentage by, there was an actual percentage in the law that said, well. Regards of how many exceptions a board member can participate, more or less based on whether it's a small district that meets once a month. Or has five members, et cetera, so the law has been quote-unquote simplified. That that includes two just cause as well as an emergency, a board member of a five-member board. Can use those for five meetings per year, so it's two meetings for just cause and hopefully not any emergency, but you could have an emergency as well. Uh, for three more, so. It doesn't really change what we do here, it doesn't change the ability to use a just cause, but just wanted to make sure that's part of the record and that's all I have.
Okay, we have any departmental reports?
No, sir, but in response to uh Director Estrada's comment or question earlier about the revised size. Of the North Lake Pilot Demonstration Project, I seem to recall it was seventy acres now, so. Again, based on water availability to, to.
It was a hundred and fifty? And now it's half? It's a lot smaller.
Yeah, it's driven by. Well, there's only twenty million and I think the cost of a lake that's a hundred and fifty acres. Would probably be more like double that.
Is it still big enough for boating?
Yeah, they're still, yeah, it still works.
Mister uh President, just for the record, Director Nelson just messaged me that he is jumping off, so I will note tape for the record that he left at nine fifty-six AM.
Thank you, uh, at this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider uh items listed on the agenda and following that, we will reconvene. In open session to report out. Regular meeting is hereby reconvened, we do not have any reportable action from closed session and with no further business, we are adjourned.